You can call this regular, or a call roll.
Mayor Querem.
Here.
Councilmember Newman.
Here.
Gomez.
Sir.
McCranskey.
Here.
McCall.
Here.
Please stand and join us in a quiet regard. Okay, so we have anybody here tonight, uh, public comment on a subject other than poultry?
Can you push that down until the green light comes on?
Green light.
Okay.
I'm Geraldine Woodley. I have two comments this evening. The first one is I want to make a public comment and thank Annie, uh, Anne Crosby for Annie's Little Pots. She closed, and I'm sure everybody will miss her, the fire, pottery, and just the camaraderie of her being here. And secondly, I'd like to thank David from Hornbakers for the fantastic job they did on Veterans Park. It really looks great. Hope you all like it.
Any other public comment on anything other than poultry? Okay, so if we have anybody here that has, uh, spoken before on poultry, um, if you have something new, you're more than welcome to come up and speak, but if it's on the same that we've been talking about, uh, we don't want to go that route, uh, tonight. And if there's anybody here that's never talked about poultry, would like to come up, you can come up and talk about whatever you want on poultry. So, do we have any, uh, public comment on poultry?
All right, you can't have. Okay, only the first paragraph or so is a reiteration of what Holly mentioned last week, but the rest of it should be. As an American in Illinois and a Princeton resident, I have the right to property and deserve to maintain that right, free from interference from the city council or other government allies. This freedom is a fundamental part of being an American citizen. The U.S. Constitution under the Fifth and Ninth Amendments and the Illinois Constitution under Section 2 describes the natural innate and inalienable right to own, possess, and keep property. Animals under Illinois statute qualify as this property. These rights cannot be infringed upon without specific authority. More specifically, Princeton falls under non-home rule, we could go over this last week. Uh, this means that the city board can only exercise powers for which they have expressed authority as provided by state law. City government is dependent upon obtaining the grants for that authority from the General Assembly. As such, limitations to citizens' property rights can only occur given threat to public health, safety, and welfare. Not only does this or lack any substantial facts, research, or data to suggest that poultry are a danger to the public's health, safety, or welfare, but the precise argument to the contrary have been presented to the store. Additionally, such infringements upon the public's health, safety, and welfare are addressed under current police and other nuisance ordinance within Princeton's current city code. Uh, citations will be abandoned. As a matter of fact, the only reasoning given publicly by the board was because a neighbor, a neighboring homeowner may not like birds residing next door. However, another person's dislike for something does not give authority for my property rights to be impeded upon. What if we started passing laws saying that you couldn't paint your house purple because your neighbors didn't like it? As stated in the Ninth Amendment, certain rights are natural and inalienable. These do include property rights, and while I understand the desire, the right to shelter does not expand to include having a dream home, as has been suggested. In the same breath, it is not the right of an animal owner to infringe upon his neighbor's rights either. With that in mind, I would like to point out that all possible ways in which my given property rights might infringe upon my neighbor are already covered under current nuisance ordinances. For instance, noise disturbance, dispel orders, pest control, and nuisance violations, and even poultry running at large are already in the books. Um, those citations are below as well. If we take a moment to dissect parts of the proposed amendment to ordinance number O-21023, we can see that some of its parts are also excessively restrictive, which is prohibited by the Eighth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. For example, the fines proposed in this ordinance proposal can be considered excessive as current nuisance ordinance, see Section 9-221, with regards to animals are set at a $25 minimum. As a matter of fact, most animals running at large never incur a fine, and when they do, it is only at $125. Additionally, the fine is set at $750 per day after three incursions when the chronic nuisance ordinance only calls for $100 per day. And it gives protections to its citizens in that the city must provide written warning and allow time for correction, um, 30 to 120 days for that. This ordinance edit does not allow for any of those protections. Also, our prime concern are the privacy rights of our citizens. Because of the Fourth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, the government should go onto private property only if there is probable cause that a law is being broken. A preemptive inspection does not serve to promote the need of health, safety, or welfare, and therefore violates a citizen's property right. In such cases of building permit requirements, please refer to Building Code Sections 14-161. Um, I went ahead and went through the, um, proposed, um, chicken poultry, um, amendment, line by line, and, um, I have that on here as well. I start with A, and I tell you, um, or I cite which of the, um, sections within our ordinance or within the Constitution provides for those, so you wouldn't have to worry about, about them not being taken care of. So I, I'm not going to go through them all, but they're there. Um, based upon the aforementioned allowances, the city of Princeton has not granted the authority, has not been granted the authority to restrict the property rights of its citizens in the proposed manner. As a voting resident of this city and a member of its Chamber of Commerce, I respectfully suggest that the city council reconsider allowing the current city ordinance to remain as is unchanged. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak? Just need your, just need your name here.
I'm Gary Swanson, and I just want to sort of put this on the record because, uh, I did email and send a copy of a proposed draft to you for an ordinance that I think would be more fair. Um, basically, the ordinance that we're looking at will ban chickens for any new owners. The current owners will be grandfathered in, but anyone in the future will be banned from having chickens. The draft I have will grandfather in the current owners, but it will also give an opportunity for any new owner to raise chickens, but he has to first apply, then he has to have a waiver signed off by his neighbors that there's no objectors, and once this is done, then the applicant can be allowed to have the chickens and, uh, under other rules and regulations of the ordinance as you have. Um, I'm just hoping that you would consider this. To me, it would be more fair. Um, my example would be, I have grandchildren. When they get older, uh, get married and have children of their own, and if they decide to live within the corporate limits of the city of Princeton, if they have a project for 4-H, Boy Scouts, or whatever, to raise chickens or ducks like I did when I grew up, they won't be able to do that. So I think this is more fair. Uh, you do have to get the waiver from your neighbors, and, uh, one example I was thinking about, we were talking about Park Place and some of the other subdivisions, and I think initially, uh, by the developer, he actually controls it when you initially set it up and buy property or live within his domain, and you know that going into this. But to me, once he releases it or gives it to the city of Princeton, then I think it falls to the ordinances that the city of Princeton have. So that's food for thought also. And my other food for thought is that if you're going to ban chickens, it's almost to the point you should ban all types of pets and animals. That's all. Thank you.
Jennifer Miller. I agree with everything that has been stated. I wanted to get up today. I am for chickens with ducks in town. Um, you guys already heard my concerns whole time. Last time we had this meeting, I asked why. I had received a response, uh, as to why ducks were not being considered in this ordinance. At the end of the meeting, I was not answered, wasn't addressed. Eight days ago, on Monday, I sent an email to everyone on board. The only one who took time to respond to me was Mr. Gomez. Thank you. I just want to know why no one else took the moment to respond to my email when everyone up here protested. Just reach out to us, get ahold of us, let us answer your questions, let us know your concerns, let us see if we can figure out, and no one else was respectful enough to reach out. I like the way. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so we'll go to, uh, you don't have another opportunity to get to the end of the meeting's public comment as well. So, uh, we'll go to the approval of minutes and Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on September 7, 2021.
Motion has been second. Any comments? Call roll.
Sorry, the second.
Uh, morning. Call roll.
Yeah. Councilmember Newman.
Hi.
Gomez.
Hi.
McCranskey.
Hi.
McCall.
Hi.
Mayor Querem.
Hi. Now go to approval of invoices and City Park Nelson.
Okay. For this period, the Department of Accounts and Finances have invoices totaling $183,405.80. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvement, we have invoices totaling $109,700, I'm sorry, $541.94. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling $169,598.72. In the Department of Other Property Utilities, we have invoices totaling $942,175.67. For a total of $1,404,722.13. There, all council members present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices, and now we're submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
Second.
Motion's been second. Comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Hi.
Gomez.
Hi.
McCranskey.
Hi.
McCall.
Hi.
Mayor Querem.
Hi. Now go to regular business and City Park Nelson.
Next on the agenda is ordinance O-21023. This is an ordinance setting standards for the raising of chickens or other fowl within the city of Princeton. This is the second and final reading. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance, and it is submitted for disposition.
I move that we approve ordinance O-21023.
Second.
Motion's been second. Got a, uh, just a couple of, uh, comments. Um, so the ordinance, um, you know, again, I repeat this again and again, but this ordinance, we've had an ordinance in place for decades that does not allow chickens in residential neighborhoods. And all we're doing with this ordinance is giving enforcement powers, which the original decade, or the original ordinance, for whatever reason, they were gave. So that's basically what we're doing, uh, is just giving our previous ordinance enforcement powers. Um, the, uh, as far as ducks are concerned, uh, this has always really been about chickens. Um, ducks have been, come in, I think there's a couple of people, maybe three people in town that might have ducks. Um, you know, ducks are a lot messier than chickens as far as their waste is concerned. Um, ducks do need a lot of water, if you're going to be cared for properly. I think I, I've read in my research, 600 gallons of water per duck is, uh, is what is considered, uh, proper. Uh, I know that some people take their ducks inside and put them in the bathtub for their water, but, uh, in my opinion, uh, and again, it's my opinion, I don't think that's right. Um, you know, ducks are, you know, I used to duck hunt, and I always duck hunted over water. That's what, uh, that's what ducks like, and they like a lot of water. So, um, just some issues as far as the concern with the ducks or any other poultry. We're just limiting this whole thing to chickens. Um, Gary, of your, uh, proposal on your ordinance, you know, we've considered that idea a while back about, you know, somebody wanted to have chickens going to their neighbors. We have a lot of people in town that, uh, don't want chickens. They don't want to live next door to chickens. They don't have a problem with chickens, they just don't want it them next door. And, uh, if you have somebody that's out there later on that we go along with something like that, and they go to their neighbors, they might have four neighbors, they have three of them, say they're all right with it, you have one that does not, is not all right with it, are they going to speak up? Well, they aren't speaking up now, they most likely are going to speak up then. You're basically pitting neighbor against neighbor if we were to do something like that. And I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable myself with that. I can't speak for the rest of the council members, but I'm just, I'm just not comfortable with, uh, you know, allowing some, a setup like that that could occur. Um, I also saw a couple of comments about, uh, the fines. You had made, uh, you had made some comments about the fines. Uh, and also, there was also a comment that you made in an email about removing the, uh, removing the inspection, uh, requirement under the ordinance. But the inspection, you know, we're going to inspect properties. I mean, if we don't inspect properties, no one's going to inspect us to inspect, uh, inspect properties. You know, what's the point? You know, they're not, uh, you know, they're not going to abide by the law. So we do have to do inspections, which we are allowed to do under the law. As far as the fines, um, I understand the, uh, the comment about, you know, how high they are, the 750 after three, um, occurrences where the laws were broken. But again, the fines are the deterrents. You know, if you're worried about the fines, don't break the law. You never have to pay a fine. So fines, um, are fine as they are as well. Now, on the, uh, constitutional question, I'm going to have Pete, uh, respond to this, but we've done some, uh, research on that.
Well, the... The bottom line is basically that the, um, the Illinois Constitution provides municipalities to regulate this stuff. Um, under Illinois Code 65, Illinois compiled statutes, Chapter 5, Article 11, Division 13, um, allows the corporate authorities in each municipality to have the following powers. And among those that are enumerated, they are to regulate and limit the intensity of use of lot areas and to prohibit uses that are incompatible with character of such districts. So it's, um, the, the Fifth Amendment argument and the due process under Article 1, Chapter 2 of the Illinois State Constitution is broad, but, um, the, the Constitution also cascades downward to give these authorities to the local municipalities. So it's on record, it's on the books. Um, that's what our research shows.
It's a state issue, and the state has come down again, as Pete said, to us, as far as what we can do with it. This is land use ordinance, and that's what this is about. So, um, this is completely, completely illegal regardless whether we are a home rule community or not. It applies to every community in the state. Anybody else on the council? Oh, one more thing. The, uh, the covenants that, uh, a lot of these subdivisions in Princeton have, they do not revert back to the city. The city does not take those over. We do, uh, maintain the streets and so on, but those covenants are all in place, and they're, they're legal. And, uh, you know, whether or not those, uh, those subdivisions, whether or not they enforce their own covenants, that's up to them, but the covenants are on the books, so it's the way the subdivisions were set up, and it's in the books.
I just want to say, um, you're welcome, Jennifer. Yeah, as I've said before, and I gave them before I was, I was elected, that I would listen to what the community has told me because, basically, um, the only one who's in charge of my, of me here is the city council member as you. And so I try to listen to what everybody says, and I try to respond, uh, to the emails and the calls that I get. Um, sometimes, uh, some decisions are not what somebody may want, but everything's always taken into consideration. Again, myself, I am for, uh, for poultry. I think it offers a great opportunity for mental health and ultimately for some, uh, food, as far as eggs go. But I think, um, that is, is something that you could always consider. Uh, and I said before, I'm not for it because it actually eliminates it, uh, just eliminates the, what Gary's saying, for anybody else to actually have them, uh, by nutrition, for in a home doesn't necessarily have them, and in the 12 months if they don't get them, that's a home that's eliminated. And I think, you know, it's a, it's a good opportunity for children to do that, to, to learn about, uh, about the chickens, how to take care of them, uh, to include some ducks. And I've never had a duck myself, but I did, I've said before, I did have some chickens.
I think the only comment I wanted to make is that, uh, we know that everyone is not going to be happy with every decision that we make up here, but we have to make decisions that are based on what's in the best interest of the entire community, and that's, that's our goal, and I think we've accomplished that tonight.
Anybody else? Okay, the motion has been second. Call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Hi.
Gomez.
Hi.
McCranskey.
Hi.
McCall.
Hi.
Mayor Querem.
Hi. Uh, thank you, Pete. Now we'll go to, uh, City Manager Report.
The only thing I have, uh, to announce today is the closure that we're going to be having here at City Hall. This doesn't happen very often. Um, however, City Hall office will be closed just to walk in traffic, and, and phone calls, actually, um, for a system upgrade that we're, that we're having internally. So Wednesday, September 22nd, from 8 until noon, Thursday, October 7th, from noon until 4:30, and Friday, October 8th, from 8:30 to 10:00 a.m. So you can still bring your payments to the drop-off box out front or out back, um, in the alleyway, and those, they'll, they'll get received, we'll get those picked up. Um, this is not affecting the other city services, just, uh, City Hall here. We'll have the, if you do have an emergency, or not an emergency, a utility emergency, I should say, um, you can still call the after hour number, uh, which is 815-879-8066. Um, we have made, we've all, if we haven't already, uh, made an announcement on Facebook, it is on our website, and then it'll be posted on the door just as a reminder. So just plan accordingly.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. Uh, just going back under Mayor Report, under the, uh, as far as the art ordinance goes into effect, the one we just passed goes into effect starting tomorrow. So for everybody that has chickens, you'll have 60 days, starting tomorrow, from tomorrow, to register your chickens. Coming into City Hall's not going to cost you anything. You just want to know who you are, where you live, and what you got. You'll have 60, you have 60 days to do that. If you do not do that, after the 60-day period, and we get a complaint, we come out, you're going to lose your chickens. Uh, so just come in and register, just so we have it down and, and everything will go forward. As far as, uh, roosters and ducks, uh, that we have in town, uh, they are prohibited, and everybody that has roosters and ducks will have three weeks to find new homes for their roosters and ducks, starting tomorrow. And, uh, you know, three weeks. We have a couple of, um, appointments.
We do, Aaron. We have two, uh, board appointments tonight. I move that we appoint to the Lovejoy Board of Trustees Lex Poppins, and I move that we appoint to the public, to the Princeton Public Library Board of Trustees Jerry Thompson for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2024. Second.
Motion's been second. Any comments on either appointment? Can you call roll?
Councilmember Newman.
Hi.
Gomez.
Hi.
McCranskey.
Hi.
McCall.
Hi.
Mayor Querem.
Hi. We have an old business tonight. Any new business? Any public comment?
I just wanted to speak to the, um, comment regarding, uh, this having always been on the books and that all, all that is being done is, um, uh, a way to put into effect penalties or how to deal with people who don't do the ordinance or don't follow the ordinance. Um, uh, the, the zoning, um, that you're, rule that you were talking about is that for land use is actually found in the Submarine Code, uh, Princeton's code, and it says no poultry farming within the city limits and within residential, just lots. Um, sorry, I'm not a professional and, and nervous. And also, I, when I write things, they come out argumentative sometimes, and I don't think that. But, um, but my understanding is that it's the zoning code that says no poultry farming. And so then my question would be, what exactly constitutes farming? Um, I don't know that pets constitute farming, um, so my argument would be that maybe this has not been on the books, especially considering the fact that we have a poultry running at large ordinance on the books, which is the one we're getting ready to change. And that is not found in the zoning, that code, that is actually found at 10-251 in Section 10 of the city ordinance, is the Health, Safety, and Welfare section of the ordinance. So this is not the zoning section. Um, so I just, I don't know, I just, I, and not, in addition, there are 20 new ordinances essentially that just came into effect, but this, you have letters A through T. That is more to me than just, um, having a way to penalize someone who's, like, to give law, as you say. Um, that is, that is creating completely new ordinances out of this. And additionally, as far as fines go, those fines are in line with, like you said, if they, if they break the law, but breaking the law at this point can even be, if your chicken is out of your yard, that's considered a violation of this new ordinance. Well, those are already taken care of in our nuisance laws that are on the books for ordinances, and those fines are nowhere near what are being asked for here. So I just, I just wanted to reiterate that I don't think it's fair. Uh, I don't know, I just, I don't think, I don't agree that some of the explanations are appropriate. Okay?
Jennifer Miller again. Couple things. You said that you're not in agreeance with allowing ducks because they're messier and need more water. Yeah, they poop a little bit more. The water issue, had mine for over two years. No issue. They have horrible pools that we, they have one in their pen, they have one in the backyard, they have two more in the garage. So basing it off of, oh, it's a, a water issue, uh, false. The other thing you said is it's always been a chicken thing, it's never really been a duck thing, false. Of the six calls originally, four of them being unique, three of those calls were from my neighbor, Leanne Martin, who has called the police department and made false reports stating that the ducks are running at large, and they never are. I have text messages show from her husband, Jeff Martin, stating, oh, yeah, we know you take good care of your ducks, they're not an issue. You can't say those have never been running at large because they've been in your yard before. So they're not at large, they're on my property, I'm out there with them, supervising them, let them run around while I'm cleaning their area, and that was the end of that. So you can't tell me that ducks have never been part of this, because it is one of the things that originated those. So you're lying.
Any other public comment?
Uh, Bridgette Lani, I just don't know what the mental health will be of my son when I go home and tell him he has three weeks to get rid of the ducks that he's raised. I go home and tell him he has three weeks to get rid of the ducks that he's raised. He was up there tonight caressing them and loving on them, and they wrapped their neck around him. So they are pets, just like the dog that we have, they're our pets. They're very much loved, and they're very clean, and they don't live in the wild where they need that much water, and they enjoy having a pet. So they're very clean animals, and I just, I don't even know how I'm going to tell him.
Any other public comment?
Jennifer Miller again. What will be the step forward when we don't get rid of our ducks? As we'll take the fines and go to court, and how will that proceed? I asked Nelson.
Well, essentially.
Over a year and a half ago, and he didn't know. He said, I don't know, I just expected you to obey my demand on getting rid of them.
Well, that's an over careful decision, you know.
No, that's what he said.
No, it's not what I said.
It is.
Sorry.
So I am not getting rid of my animals, they are pets. They're, you know, start finding a way, they're not going anywhere, they're my property, on my property. So figure out what you guys need to do next.
Any other public comment?
It doesn't matter at this point, but all of the, all of the possible problems are already taken care of by other ordinance, already on the books, including her question about how to deal with her leaving or having to get rid of her chickens that's under chronic nuisances, and all of that information is there on how to go about the process of removing someone's property from their residence, and it includes a court. You have to give them written notice, 30 to 120 days to correct the problem, and after that, you can fine them up to $100 per day, but there are still protections with regard to that, and they go through the court system. That's all I can say.
Any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to adjourn and reconvene.
I move that we adjourn our regular meeting this evening and reconvene on Monday, October 4, 2021, 7 o'clock at City Hall. Second.
Motion's been second. Call roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
Mayor Quirrell.
Aye.